There's probably.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Capitol Improvements and City Development Committee to order at 7:02. The members of my committee are Councilor Cooper and Councilor Reynolds. And tonight, we have one motion from the docket of July 18th, 2017. I entertain a motion to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 2nd, I'm sorry, October 3rd, 2017, relative to the city's capital improvement program for fiscal year 2018-2022.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Cooper. So, it's a difficult year for the capital improvements program, but you can see I have started marking mine up, and I hope that you're getting the same. It is almost a moot point to be even discussing the capital improvement plan, but because it's charted driven, I want to follow the same procedure, even though it came out so late. And not knowing who is going to be the capital improvements city development committee chairperson next term, my recommendation to the administration is just put a new cover on this and issue it on January 1st, because it'll be ready for February 1st for the next council, and we could use this book to go forward with next term. However, we still need to do a resolution, and we still need to file something, and we can't do any of that until after we have the public hearing. That's why October 3rd gives us the 14 days we need to do the proper advertising. And we know, unfortunately, not many people are going to show up to comment on the capital improvement plan, they never do, but we do have to follow the letter of the law. Any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, the motion's in order?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. That concludes the business that the capital improvements and city development committee has to bring to the committee for this evening. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Cooper. I have the committee adjourned at 7:04. Thank you for your attention.
I do, I can go quickly?
Go ahead, Sarah.
All right, I'd like to call the City Property and Claims Committee to order at 7:04. And I have Rick, oh, where is she? Heather, she just left.
Thank you.
That's all right, we have Rick. Okay. So, I have one, two, two calls. From the docket of September 19th, 2017, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor in accordance with Section 1-12 of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro to accept the donation of $500 in Stop &amp; Shop gift certificates from the Attleboro Elks Lodge Number 1014.
Second.
She have a question here. Are these all on one? Look at this mark, the way these were.
So then go to them.
Just go, they're going to do them all under this. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve.
Vote that one first.
So I'm going to vote this one first and not read it?
Right.
Okay. So you seconded that, right? Correct, thank you, Councilor Conti. Again, I thank everybody that does this, you know, that these come in really handy when people are finding that their checks and whatnot might not come in, or the veterans are behind, so this, oh no, this is going, donation stop and check, who is this going to? To the city of Attleboro, not the veterans, it doesn't say the veterans.
This should be, I was at the meeting last, I'm sorry.
But it is going to the veterans, so, okay, so all I'm saying is, is that when I was up there seeing Ken the other day, he was telling me some gentleman had called, and I was right there, and it was nice to see that he can dig and get these and help that person make it through the month until their check arrived, so it's very important, so I thank you for the people, for the Attleboro Elks Lodge for doing this. All those in favor?
Aye.
I assume no one's opposed, because there's only two of you. The second one is, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor in accordance with Section 1-12 of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro to accept the donation of $100 in Attleboro Farmer's Market gift certificates from the Board of Directors of the Attleboro Farmer's Market. And I'm going to just ask the same question of you, this is going to the veterans?
Second.
Second the motion, and it's going to the veterans?
Yes.
Okay. So I ditto exactly what I said about the Elks, that's great that the Farmer's Market is doing that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, passes. And then, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to declare the following school property as surplus and available for disposition. There are 245 Hill Roberts library books, they are either obsolete and/or in poor condition.
Second.
I think that pretty much speaks for itself, and so I would ask all those in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor in accordance with Section 1-12 of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro to accept the donation of three pieces, or goes, of office furniture from Sensata Technologies with a combined estimated value between $10,000 and $15,000. Can I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
And I have a question for somebody that might be able to answer it for me, where would this furniture be going? Does anyone know?
And I have a question, is it gold plated?
I don't know, it's very expensive. It's nice, it's a great gift, it's a great gift, it'd be nice to know where it's being donated to in the city, so it is, it's a beautiful gift.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing in the correspondence, Councilor, that the office furniture consists of one L-shaped desk, a case wall unit, and a credenza.
Yes.
And there are photographs which show that this is executive quality furniture.
It's beautiful.
Custom, custom furniture.
Custom made, yeah, nice, it's very nice.
Very nice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. From the docket of September 5th, 2017, I entertain a motion in accordance with Section 1-12 of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro to approve the mayor's request to accept the donation of $300 in Stop &amp; Shop gift certificates from the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post Number 115, and count it as gifts to the city of Attleboro.
Second.
And again, I assume these are going to the veterans' office, and it's great that Post 115 is doing that. All those in favor?
Well, it's not necessarily a question, I had a, just a little comment here, I had a very nice conversation with Ken, say his last name?
Bodiger.
Bodiger. The other day, with regards to this, obviously with a prior piece of business, and there I had a couple of questions, and one of the things that really benefits the veterans in this way is that their, the Stop &amp; Shop gift cards are really flexible, so that they can use it for fuel, if they need it for fuel that week, they can use it for food, they can use it for schools, like, any of those kinds of things, so those are.
Just food, just.
Yeah, so not just.
Everything that's sold at Stop &amp; Shop.
Yeah, so it works out, it's really super helpful in a variety of ways, because you never really think about individuals who might need gas cards or things like that to get back and forth to work, to stretch that out, so that's super helpful.
Yeah, that makes sense, too, that is, it's great. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So those motions pass, I have no further business this evening, so I would bring a motion to close out the meeting.
Second.
And that would be at 7:10. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes, and that's all I have to have for tonight, and would like to call, no.
No.
I'm all done.
We're going to go and start the, at this point, we're going to start the special meeting, then we'll come back and we're going to do the rest of the committee reports. I know there's some people in attendance who have, who are here to speak for the public hearing, and there was a little bit of a time crunch. Councilor Conti needed to have his meeting, the reason we sat at 7:02 was that that one item needs to be voted out tonight in order for us to have the public hearing, thank you, in order to have the public hearing and have the right amount of time to advertise, so that's why I asked him to go first. So this time, I'd ask you, please stand and join in, let's look for a slide. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may be seated. Okay, just a reminder to those on the council and those that are attendance, if you have a phone or similar electronic device, please turn it off or silence it, it does interfere with our broadcast. At this time, I would also ask Mr. Withers to read the notice for this special meeting.
September 5th, 2017, to the Mayor's municipal council, from Frank Cook, council president, councilors. By authority of Article 2, Section 2-7C of the Attleboro Home Rule Charter, I hereby call a special meeting of the municipal council as follows. Date, Tuesday, September 12th, 2017, time, 7:00 PM, place, council chamber. Purpose is to hold public hearings and any other matters/other legal matters that may come before the council. C.C., Mayor Kevin J. Dumas.
Thank you. We had, we have actually three public hearings scheduled for this evening. The first one, however, we had been asked, as I mentioned back at the meeting in August, to continue the request from BCWC, BCWC Inc. to operate a registered marijuana dispensary, and they have again asked us for continuation until August 3rd, excuse me, to October 3rd, and so that public hearing will be continued to October the 3rd. And at this point, I would ask Mr. Withers to read the notice for the first public hearing this evening, please.
Yes, the first public hearing tonight is a public hearing relative to the following matter, the installation of stop signs on O'Donnell Drive at Patterson Street, both sides.
Thank you. I'm going to ask first for those who are in favor of it to come up and speak, then those in opposition, and then those, those not opposed or against, so, and as you come to the podium, and when you come to the podium, please give us your name and address for the record, and direct your comments to the council as a collective body.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, my name is Stacy Perry, and I reside at Edel O'Donnell Drive.
Good evening, thank you for coming in.
Thank you. I'm here tonight, and I've already submitted a petition for the stop sign, I went around, collected some signatures from neighborhoods and neighbors of the other neighborhoods, so I'm here tonight to ask you to approve a stop sign on the corners of O'Donnell Drive. I'm asking for the safety concerns of the children in the neighborhood. The traffic outside of O'Donnell Drive has been getting worse, and in just the past year, I've seen multiple children almost being nearly struck by speeding cars. I have taken the time to knock on my doors and my neighbors' doors, and we all have the same consensus on the speeding is overwhelming, and we're all in agreeance of the safety of our families, that a simple addition to a stop sign is necessary. And I appreciate your help in letting me speak, that's all I really have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker?
If I may just.
Yes, Councilor Perica.
Thank you very much, President Cook, so thank you very much for coming in, now it's nerve wracking to come and speak in front of all of us. Do you have signs there right now, can you tell me what those signs are?
They're yield signs.
They're yield signs, okay.
Yep.
Great, that's all.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, thank you for coming in.
Oh, seriously, Councilor Hall, I'm sorry.
Was there anybody in the neighborhood that was in opposition that you know of?
Nope, actually, I went and I knocked on every single door in my neighborhood and on the opposing street, so I have like 28 signatures, and they're all in the vicinity of 500 feet, maybe 1,000 feet from them, and most everybody on O'Donnell Drive. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy.
Since you wrote your statement, if, before you leave, if you could just see our admin assistant in here, so she can make a copy of it, so we can get that into our minutes?
Okay.
All right, she's right in there?
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor? Anyone else here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone to speak, anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone here to speak now, the for or against? Anyone to speak now, the for or against? Hearing none. Councilor Perica, do you see any need to keep this hearing open?
I do not, President Cook, thank you.
Good thing. Before I close it, I would like to ask Mr. Withers, however, just to enter into the record, item number three in the other communications, if you would.
Certainly.
Do we include that as part of the.
This was a petition from residents of O'Donnell Drive in favor to install stop signs at the intersection of O'Donnell Drive at Patterson Street.
Okay. I'm going to refer that matter to the Transportation and Traffic Committee.
Thank you very much.
I just want to get that on the record as being discussed during the public, during the public hearing. So, so at this point, I'm going to declare that public hearing closed, it'll now be referred to the Traffic and Transportation Committee for the next step in the process, okay? Okay, and Mr. Withers, if you'd like to read the notice for the next public hearing, please.
Yes, it's a public hearing relative to the following matter, no parking north side of Eldridge Street from County to Dennis, and a three-hour time limited parking on the south side of Eldridge from Dennis to County.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Councilor Perica.
I don't have anyone that I'm aware of, I don't, I'm not sure if Mr. Cooper has anyone that he's aware of that will be coming, I do have an email from the police chief indicating his support for the restriction in parking, so we were, we had a site visit today, so I don't know if you would like me to present that to the city clerk?
I would actually suggest, Mr. Withers, that should go to you and be stamped in.
Okay.
I can certainly do that.
Just so that, you know, since it was mentioned at this hearing.
Sure.
And that way, you'll be able to work on it at that point. Okay. So is there anyone else here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone here to speak now, the for or against? Anyone to speak either for or against? Hearing none. Councilor Perica, do you see any need to keep this public hearing open?
No, President Cook, I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and at this time.
We have to make a.
Then that will go back to the.
No, you're looking at it wrong. We'll talk about it after.
Okay, we all set?
Yes.
Okay. So that concludes our public hearing for this evening, we're going to go into a reading of the other communications at this time.
Okay. We received a communication from Dick Oliver, commander of Post 312, South Attleboro Post Number 312, 437 Newport Avenue, South Attleboro, Mass., requesting permission to hold the annual poppy day on Saturday, November 4th, 2017, from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., with a rain date of November 18th, 2017.
License committee, please.
Yes, we've received a communication from John Kenyon, director of BCWC Inc., 679 Washington Street, Suite 8, Box Number 117, South Attleboro, Mass., to continue the public hearing for a special permit to operate a registered marijuana dispensary at 34 Extension Street, Attleboro, Mass., from September 12th, 2017, to October 3rd, 2017.
Zoni and Laney's committee, please.
And we also received an application for an underground fuel storage tank license from C&amp;B Attleboro LLC, the lessy is Irving Oil Marketing Inc., 10 Green Street, Batucket, Rhode Island, for a self-service gasoline/diesel fuel sales with a retail store at 466 Washington Street, Attleboro, for an underground 24,000 gallon and 8,000 gallon gasoline tanks and an 8,000 gallon diesel tank.
License committee, please. And Councilor, Councilor Perica, since you are the second member on that committee, this matter does require a public hearing, would you like to call for a public hearing on the 3rd of October?
Yes, President Cook, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. The motion is in order, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passed, that hearing will be on, on the 3rd. And let's see, the only other matter that we have to deal with at this time is the, the motion that was the subject of the Capitol Improvements meeting, and so at this point, I'm not going to call on all the committees, because they're all going to be meeting in a few minutes, except for City Property, which I already met, and any other councils, committees that are going to cancel. So at this time, I'm only going to call on the Capitol Improvements and City Development, so, Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Reporting for the Capitol Improvements and City Development Committee, from the docket of July 18th, 2017, I move to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, relative to the city's capital improvement program for fiscal year 2018-2022.
Second.
Thank you, the motion is in order, are there any comments?
Yes, Mr. President. As you all know, the capital improvements plan came out late this year, and I have been reviewing it, I've made some notes, but our program this year is going to be abbreviated because the capital improvement plan is supposed to be delivered to the city council by February 1st. So I'm going to make a recommendation to the planning board that they just put a new cover on this booklet, and it becomes 2018 to 2023 program, and we will have a public hearing on October 3rd, we will close that public hearing, we'll have a committee vote, we'll bring the vote out to the council, the committee will draft a resolution to send to the mayor, and ask for the council to approve that, and that should all be done by the middle of October. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Any other concerns or comments? Hearing none, this matter requires a voice vote, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President, that concludes the business that the Capitol Improvements City Development Committee has to bring before the council this evening, we look forward to a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, that actually concludes all of the business for the special meeting for this evening, we will be, in a moment, I'll be calling for adjournment, and then we will be just having the various committees, committees meet. Anything that's voted out tonight will be voted next week. Next week, there are no public hearings, because it is a primary day for the special election for the state senate, and, as well as for the city's primary, but we will be meeting, but there will be no public hearings next week, obviously, as you all are aware. And also, just a reminder, yesterday was the 16th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks, there were several of us who attended the special service they had at the fire station yesterday, well, thank you, those of you who attended. And just a reminder that this coming Saturday night, at the Veterans Triangle at Kiprins Park, beginning at 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock, is the annual POW MIA 9/11 remembrance service, so I encourage you all to attend.
Thank you.
At that time, so. So that does conclude everything for this special meeting for this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, the motion's in order, all of the favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes, adjourned at 7:23. Thank you. I'm just going to vacate my chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Public Works is canceled for this evening?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Canceled.
Sony.
And I'm canceled.
We should have a little.
You already did your.
We should have a little sign from here, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to call Budget and Appropriations to order at 7:24, please, and thank you. I had surgery last week, so I do apologize that I wasn't here, couldn't get myself in here after surgery, so I do think, I guess there was a little debacle in, so I invited Stan to come in, the city assessor, to answer any questions that any counselor may have regarding the assessment and the maintenance, and Stan, you're going to come up and go over any questions, and just to elaborate, I know this actually came down after the July meeting in August, but because we only had seven counselors, and that's when President Cook was acting president, it wasn't prudent to have a vote with seven people with this amount of money, either, so I thought it would be better to hold it, and I do thank those two committee members, Mr. Blair and Mr. Bellisio, who did fill in, thank you very much. So Stan, I had talked to you at length, I met with you in your office way back in July, and everything that you went over, why with the new law, the five years, and what your thoughts were for this particular motion, and any questions that other counselors might have, that, before I let anyone else speak, that you may want to elaborate or clarify?
Let me start by saying good evening, councilors, and let me say that we have normally done this, and it's, it's been a three-year certification, a package where we have a contract, two years of maintenance, one year of actual certification, full tape and measure and so forth. What has changed in the state is that they're now gone to a five-year certification program, so there's four years of maintenance, and the fifth year is the certification. What occurred this year that is not normal is that in January, we were notified this is what it's going to be, I had prepared a three-year contract, which normally what ends up happening is that in the maintenance years, we come down with whatever the appropriation would be in the June timeframe, and in the certification year, we would go for the appropriation in the January timeframe. This year, what happened was, I was informed by the contracting companies that more than likely, the requirements in going to a five-year is going to be costly, much more costly than in previous years, because like any other business, they're running a business, and they're determining themselves, and every three years, they're going to be allotting a certain amount of money. Well, if it goes out to five years, keeping staffs on and so forth is going to raise the requirement of what it's costing to do maintenance. So what I then did is, I pulled back everything that I normally would have put out, talked to a number of people, and decided to extract, if you still have the letter, I extracted a number of things to bring the cost down. So in my office, we've taken over the personal property, we've taken over visiting about 500 other permits that normally would have been in the certification, therefore, by the time I rewrote the request for proposal, and also. Therefore, by the time I rewrote the request for proposal and also put it out, I was issuing it in the May timeframe. So therefore, we didn't get our bids back until the, uh, June timeframe. Then we sent it down to here in July to do the certification. That's why normally, every maintenance year, it would have come down for approval here in the council, and it's been this way for, I've been here for over 17 years, June timeframe, maintenance, certification, January timeframe. It's not part of the budget, it's a separate item, it does not appear in the budget, never has. It has in the past appeared in, if you might remember, it appeared in capital packages, which I, I'm not sure of who pulled it out of there, but it was inappropriate to be in capital packages, because it's really not capital. So the council did do that, I think it was two years ago that they extracted it, and it just would come down in the Jan-, uh, like last year, it came down in the January timeframe. Previous years, it would came down in the June timeframe. Last year was the certification year. So I heard there was a number of questions why it was at this later date. This is a 2018 maintenance agreement. We're in 2018, the money is expended in 2018. So if that helps you understand why it came down as it did, it was also to give us a feel, if you remember the letter, it was to give us the feel, I was being told that maintenance, if we hadn't changed anything, would have cost us around $55,000. The next closest bid that we had was at $35,000. So all said and done, by extracting what we did and taking some of the work away and doing it out of the office, I estimate that we saved about $19,000 or, uh, $18,000, whichever, inside of that bid. So that's it. It's a one-year maintenance contract, I just did a one-year maintenance contract, probably will do another one-year maintenance contract next year, and then I will go for a three-year contract to do the, the remaining two years of maintenance in the certification. And the reason being that, if you remember, Mass. General Law only allows you to do a three-year contract, but they changed certification to five years.
And Stan, um, in your memo, you had said that you're going to also be doing half of the building permits and real property, which is approximately like $18,000?
Oh, yeah. Eight, that's about $18,000 that we're doing.
Of contracted services.
Services, I said 19 tonight, $18,000 to $20,000 is being done out of our office with our staff.
How is that a change? You're saying?
In the past, that was in the contract, but I was informed, that's why I pulled it back and did what I did. I was in, informed if we didn't do that, this, uh, contract would have more than likely been coming in at $35,000, $40,000 rather than the $19,000.
Okay, and thank you, because I know every time you've been down here, you, you always give us a hint of what's coming also during the budget process for your committee, that, um, Council Delicio had run when I was teaching that night. Um, so thank you, you had mentioned it then also, what was going to be going on, so you have always alluded, um, previous, what might happen also. So, Council Delicio?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for inviting the assessor down tonight. I think, um, your insight is always valuable, thank you for coming down. Question I have is, I'm looking, and we have a deadline of October 1st, we're kind of running up against that deadline. Walk us through what happens if we don't hit that deadline in terms of getting this voted on and passed.
What do you mean? What hap- if you pass the vote?
So it's.
In the next week or so, we'll hit that deadline.
What happens if we don't hit that deadline?
Well.
What are the ramifications?
The ramification would be, if, if you don't pass this money and you don't do it, we don't get our, be able to send all the information we need to send out to the state, and therefore, I mean, I hate to say that you're probably going to a preliminary, uh, billing process.
Thank you, and thank you for answering my questions on Wednesday. Um, I know I had a few of them, so thank you for taking the time to explain everything to me. It's a cumbersome process, so to be able to have the assessor here to answer this, I think brings the light we need to, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Stan, that's why I had said, even though it had come down after July, and then we only had the seven people to vote, and then with bringing it back, I talked to make sure with the October 1st deadline, and President Cook, next week, if we vote, and as Counselor Delicio is basically blatantly saying, if we do, if this does not pass the council, so not even, don't think about the timeframe, because it was going to be voted on next week, but if the council votes no.
We stop.
Okay.
I mean, that's the best way you say it, we stop, because therefore, what ends up happening, there's, there's about 580 billing permits that that work would then have to be thrown into our office to be done, done through our office, which is a cumbersome project. I mean, it, it would delay the whole approval, because fair in mind, it's not a certification year, but all our information, I mean, what you're dealing with is new houses and new growth and, and all the numbers you want to know before you set your budget. We won't have it. Not to say that I'm not working on it right now in anticipation of October 1st, but that's not our information until we pay our bill.
Okay, and that's why, you know, I'm very direct, like, so.
Yeah.
Um, Ms. Hall?
Yeah, um, thank you so much, Miss Madam Chair, and thanks for coming down, Stan. Um, I mean, my, my personal opinion is, I don't think, hopefully, that the counselors will see that we probably need to pass this thing, and I hope that, that you get a favorable vote. Um, I know you'll get one from me.
Thank you.
But I, I did have a question about the, the amount of money that you, you know, there's always a trade-off when you take something back and you try to reduce the cost of something, and I, I do appreciate it, that your attempts to do that, um, without any additional personnel? Are you doing this?
I'll be honest with you, it's, uh, it's a real struggle.
I understand.
It is a massive struggle that we're doing this in, out of the office. I mean, there are certain things that I felt comfortable in doing, like pulling in, 9,000 of it is, was personal property. I felt comfortable of years of experience in, in that area, pulling that in. Also, what made it easier too, it may sound strange, but what made it easier too, is some of the things that the state made remote, save us a little, little bit of time. The council itself kind of helped that process. If you remember, the council voted the number of personal property accounts, when you pulled out that $7,000, you pulled out about 400 accounts. 400 accounts that we nuislessly had to go out, pay good money to look for, uh, $24 or $50 a year. So that helped the process. Right now, we're going out and looking at 450 accounts, whereas if it was two years ago or a year ago, I probably would not have done it, because we would have been going out looking at about 900 accounts. And of that, you know, I mean, you did extract from the levy capacity, you extracted about, oh, $3.5 million or, or about, uh, about $100,000 worth of taxation, but it was, it is eroding. It was, it was that nuisance area, if you remember, I used to tell you about, you put it in and it's not there.
Sure.
And you're raising the levy capacity, it's, so that helped. But it, it still is, if you stop and think about it too, the, the thing that's really bothers some of us, there are 1,400 billing permits, and I, we're reviewing 1,400 billing permits, or actually, the contract is only giving 520 of those to the appraisal company, the major ones we sorted out. There's a lot of driving around that we're doing right now in the city to pick up, you know, those things that are small, but we're doing it.
Well, I appreciate that, and thanks for the out-of-the-box thinking and getting this contract down to a.
Thank you.
Reasonable amount. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for, um, bringing that back up too, because that was something that, when I had, um, taken the personal property, and I, I know you and I had kind of had a conflict of going because of the taxation aspect with the real property, and then you did talk about those lower accounts that you said are more cumbersome?
Right.
So thank you, that does show, see how sometimes.
Well, it helped, I mean, it helped.
That was a pause.
It helped in our office and it helped in the collector's office, because usually those accounts that were cumbersome were paying money to go out and review them, and we're not collecting them.
And we weren't ready to go up, remember, we were going back and forth with the $10,000, the $5,000, I think we kind of agreed, and actually, that's where the council and the assessor actually worked together, so that was positive. Mr. Blair?
Stan, when you were down for the budget hearing, if my memory correct, you basically informed us this.
Yes, I did.
Particular item was going to be coming down.
I did, indeed. When it was budget hearings, I said to you, this item would be coming down at a different time in what I was doing. I did inform you. Thank you.
And that's why I always invite you down, Stan, straight from the horse's mouth, right? Okay, any other questions? That would be one of your little sayings, right? Okay. Um, anything else?
All good.
Okay. Um, any other questions or anything before I voted out of committee? And Stan, you're all set too?
I'm all set, thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a great evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stan Nassus.
Thank you.
Okay. Ch-ch-ch-chu. I entertain a motion to approve from the docket of December, uh, September 5th, 2017, I'm sorry. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer for $19,000 from account 11241000-578300, Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer, to account 11411000-595010, Assess's Reevaluation to Pay for the Work Necessary to Complete the Fiscal Year 2018 Maintenance and Interim Adjustment of Real Property. Upon approval, approval, the available balance and reserve fund for transfer will be 320,175.43.
Second.
Thank you. Of course, that amount now is, um, could be amended, and I do apologize, but next week, when I report my committee reports, I will give the balances, and how I'll give you the balances, and I have asked the administration, when they bring down the, um, communication, they do give us those balances too. So it's not just me as the budget chair, that everybody, okay? Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay. Um, uh, uh, for?
Aye.
Aye, against? Thank you, motion passes. Ch-ch-chu. I entertain, uh, from the docket of September 19th, 2017, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to accept the following language that was provided by bond council, ordered that the city votes to supplement each prior order of this council that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects to provide that, in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, the premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes, thereunder, lest any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of bond, such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied. This vote would allow the premiums associated with the orders listed below to be in compliance with the statute. 329, 2017, waste water treatment plant, 114, 2014, Hoppin Hill Dam, 421, 2015, D P W facility, 723, 2015, water storage building, 1020, 2015, A H S feasibility, 216, 2016, Oak Hill Water Storage, 45, 2016, police fire equipment.
Second.
Thank you. And as it states, um, everyone, I believe, did get the memo from the state treasurer, Laura Gignac, and basically on November 7th, uh, 7th of 2016.
She got quite a promotion.
I'm, I'm sorry. What?
City treasurer, not state treasurer.
I'm sorry.
You gave her a promotion.
What did I say?
State treasurer.
State treasurer, city treasurer, thank you. Um, she won't mind, it wasn't an insult or anything. Um, okay, it was changed due to the new Municipal Modernization Act, so based upon this, we have to have the compliance, and I just want to say good job to Laura Gignac up in the treasurer's office. She has a very welcoming office, if anyone has questions, she's always willing to go over anything. Okay? Um, so it, to be in compliance with that, we have to pass this. Any other questions or comments?
If I may, just add that, no.
No, no, go ahead.
Just add, the Municipal Modernization Act is quite complex, so I would suspect that as we go along, we'll see more pieces to it, um, but this is an integral part, so I'm glad to see you coming up.
Yes, thank you, because we've already seen other aspects, things that we've had to change, so thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion passes. The last motion, I entertain a motion from the docket of September 19th, 2017, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $4,201.66 from account 11241000-578300, Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer, to account 16301000-548040, Recreation Supplies Equipment to Purchase a Skid Sprayer to Assist with Spraying for Broadleaf Weeds and Crab Grass.
Second.
Thank you. Um, Dennis does a phenomenal job, as does all his crew, um, for, um, any, for Dennis, he wouldn't ask for it unless he needed it, and I think everybody knows that. Mr. Blair?
In the communication, didn't he lay, um, how much it would save in labor?
Yep, and we know Dennis always is right there to do that, and he wouldn't ask unless.
We can't, uh, not buy equipment without increasing our labor force, and most of the equipment we buy, especially in that department, helps us maintain the fields and whatnot with the same amount of personnel, so, I think it's a good, it definitely is a good purchase.
And, um, Dennis is always very prudent when it comes to his department and monies and anything like that, so, um, but also, even during every, with all this budgetary constraints and everything, we also have to evaluate everything, so it's still.
Yeah.
For an evaluation, but I know he wouldn't ask unless it was definitely needed. Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, propose? No, no, motion passes, and that is all for the budget appropriations, and I would like to call for an adjournment at 7:44.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:44, thank you.
Who's left?
No, I'm last.
One's going twice.
Last, it's the scissors.
It's on, that's exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. Because it came in like that, and it needs to be flipped.
Oh, yes.
So I have to make a motion to amend that.
All right, I would like to call the committee on Elections, uh, ordinances, elections, as you said, matters to order at 7:44 p.m. Um, I don't have any motions to bring out tonight, I just want to read into the record the Manchester Reservoir Ordinance, because I want to bring this out, um, in the next couple of weeks, get this taken care of. Um, I was waiting on some information from the city solicitor, which I'm, um, just seeking some clarification on, should have everything within, uh, the next couple of days, so we'll be able to move on one way or another with this. So bear with me as I read this. Ordinance relative to, uh, from the docket of October 21st, 2014, um, we will be moving to amend Section 16-20 of the Revised Ordinance of the City of Attleboro, Restricted Use of Oars Pond, Manchester Reservoir as follows. Ordinance relative to the restricted use of Oars Pond, Manchester Reservoir, and passive uses. Be it ordained by the municipal council to amend Section 16-20, Restricted Use of Oars Pond and Manchester Reservoir, of the Revised Ordinance of the City of Attleboro, by deleting the section in its entirety and inserting the following. Section 16-20, Restricted Use of Oars Pond and Manchester Reservoir, 16-20.1, unauthorized person shall enter a pond, any pond or reservoir owned or used as a source of water supplied by the City of Attleboro or the land owned by the City of Attleboro surrounding the same for any reason whatsoever, except that fishing from the shore shall be permitted in Oars Pond, Manchester Reservoir, if a permit therefore has been granted, notwithstanding the foregoing passive recreation, as that term is defined in Section 17-11.2 herein, shall also be allowed in the city's lands surrounding Oars Pond and Manchester Reservoir, subject to the conditions and restrictions set forth in Section 16-20.5 through 16-20.9 below. 16-20.2, any resident of the City of Attleboro who holds a fishing license from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and who has attained the age of 15 years may obtain, the city clerk a permit to fish in Oars Pond and Manchester Reservoir. A person under the age of 15 may fish without a permit if he is accompanied by an adult holder of a permit. 16-20.3, this permit shall be effective for the same period as the fishing license from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Fishing shall be permitted from one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset. 16-20.3, this permit shall be effective for the same period as the fishing license from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Fishing shall be permitted from one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset. 16-20.4, fishing shall be designated, from designated areas on the shore by hook and line only in numbers, lengths, and kinds allowed by the fishing game laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. No live bait shall be used. A map of designated areas shall be provided by the superintendent of water. 16-20.5, no person shall drink or have in his possession alcoholic beverages of any nature while on these grounds fishing. No person shall dispose of rubbish, or refuse, or deposit, or discharge human excrement on these fishing grounds. 16-20.6, no person shall build a fire, picnic, smoke, hunt, shoot, or trap on these fishing grounds. No person shall in any way bring firearms of any nature to these fishing grounds. 16-20.7, no person shall tamper with or damage any gate barrier or lock or deface or defile signs, trees, or other property on these fishing grounds. 16-20.8, no person shall refuse and neglect to obey any reasonable request made or order given by the offices or employees of the Department of Water or of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Natural Resources. 16-20.9, these ordinances are in addition to any regulation established by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Natural Resources and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health covering the public use and water supply areas for recreation. Almost done, guys. 16-20.10, persons found to be in violation of this section, section dash, I'm sorry, 16-20, shall be liable to a fine of $75 for first offense and a fine of $100 for the second and subsequent violations. Said penalties to be assessed in accordance with the provisions for noncriminal disposition of violations in General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 21D, or as a criminal penalties under General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 20, as amended. Legal opinion dated August 15th. Nope, something different, sorry about that, shouldn't be there. So the public hearings were held and closed October 21st, 2014, and April 4th, 2007. Thank you. I'm not going to bring it up for vote this evening. Exactly. But I just wanted to read it in, so we'll have time to discuss. If you have any questions, please send them down. Council Higgin.
So for this, you're not going to bring it out, but...
Yep, I just wanted to get it read into the...
What's going on? Can we kind of...
Yeah, absolutely. So as we know, this has been going on for decades and decades. So long and short of it is, after the public hearing, I had some concerns really about liability. So if we open it up for passive recreation, someone gets hurt, what's the situation? Is the city going to be liable? What can we, can and can't we do? So I just wanted to get that clarification from the city solicitor, and I'm going to try to meet up with her again this week. I know she sent me, we've been going back and forth via email. I just want to make sure that I get the clarity before we really bring it in.
Because I do support the passive, I'm going to say it right now. I do support the passive recreation, hopefully. We can get to that point. How about everything else going down?
Everything in terms of...
For this ordinance? Because I know in the, we have other motions in the other committees, too.
Yeah, I wouldn't be at liberty to discuss those as they're not in my committee, but I'm confident that there's positive movement going in those. I just think it's time to get this out and move on.
Please.
I know. It's, you know, something like this, where it's been such a heated issue, I want to make sure that it had the proper tension and that we flushed it through and really vetted it every possible way. So I know this has been going on for several councils.
If I'm, because I know even though this is particularly within, say, the W2 area and stuff, even people over in the Heberville, Oak Hill Ave, go down there and use the area, whether they're walking their dogs, they're fishing. And I do actually get a lot of calls about this.
Yeah.
So thank you.
No, my pleasure. And, you know, I want to thank everyone at home for their patience as we flush this out as well. I know the public hearing and the public, and the meetings that we had back in March, there's a lot of passion around this. So I wanted to bring it out when I felt comfortable that we're at the point that we could answer a majority of those concerns. So thank you for the question. Council Hall?
I'm going to piggyback on the walking of the dogs. Is there anything in the ordinance that specifically references having dog walking and what rules and guidelines might be for that? I think that's sometimes what causes concerns also is, I know you talked about, I'm going to say excrement, if you would. I'll use that word. And I think that that often is a consideration that should be looked at, and dogs should be specifically stated.
Sure. There's nothing, the excrement, as unpleasant as it is, was human excrement. Now, when we bring this out in front of the full council, or even next week when I, or the week after when I voted out of committee, be an appropriate time if you want to add an amendment or propose an amendment. You could certainly look at that.
I'll take a look, thank you.
Council Preco?
Just as a response, and we do have an ordinance as it pertains to animal maintenance, and there is a $25, like if whoever is in charge of issuing the offense catches you, it is a $25 fee. It just does a point of interest. We do have that in our ordinance book as it stands already.
And then that should probably be, it should probably then be just referenced to that, in this ordinance also, that there's, or whatever, repeated. I don't know. I'll look at the ordinance, and maybe that's just the language we use then.
Yeah, and a lot of it is just really kind of tightening up the language as well. I think that we have an opportunity, as we go forward, to also speak with the positive B to bring up and put in appropriate signs when more appropriate.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Thank you for the conversation on this. And I think I speak for all of us when I said, finally, I can see the light at the end of the tunnel as it relates to this, and it's not that of an oncoming freight train. So it's a good thing. Seeing none, I would call for an adjournment at 7:52.
Second.
All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
I call the committee meeting for Transportation and Traffic to order at 7:53. Council Reynolds, you and me tonight, kid. No, it's fine. I have a couple, I'm trying to kind of tidy up my committee a little bit here. And I would like to move on a couple of items. Maybe I'll have a couple of motions to strike, and we have a couple of discussion points this evening as well. From the docket of June 20th, 2017, I entertain a motion to strike the following item from the docket of June 20th, 2017, a letter from Gerald Chase, 48 Net Rock Road, Attleboro, Mass, regarding the missing 30 mile per hour sign on Oak Hill Avenue that has been missing for months. It is my understanding that that has been replaced, so we can remove his letter from my docket. Any questions or concerns? I would hope that potentially in the future, instead of, if there's someone in the community that has a concern with regards to a sign, you need to contact your board councillor, or you can contact the Chairperson of Traffic and Transportation to blast out a letter to everybody under the sun. We can be more direct, and that's all I have to say about that. Move for vote, all those in favor? Aye. Motion passes, thank you. From the docket of February 7th, 2017, I entertain a motion to strike the following item from the docket of February 7th, 2017, for further study and recommendation for streetlights to be installed along Commerce Way, 117, 2017, New Business, Mr. Delisio.
Second.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Mr. Delisio? How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm great. So I'm making a motion to strike the streetlights on Commerce Way. And it was here...
Thanks for the wonderful work over at the DPW.
So you have no concerns at all with me striking this business?
I appreciate you entertaining it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or concerns? I move for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Trying to make sure I get my notes down. From the docket of December 20th, 2016, I entertain a motion to strike the following item from the docket of December 20th, 2016, that no parking signs be placed in front of the Greek Orthodox Church on Sixth Park Avenue during services on Saturday and Sunday.
Second.
Thank you. We, the individuals, well, this was new business that was brought in by Mr. Delisio. Mr. Delisio brought the individuals from the Greek Orthodox Church to a traffic study commission, and we tried to hash out an appropriate or a satisfactory resolution for them. And unfortunately, due to their location and the restrictions of that area, there really wasn't a whole lot that we could do for them. I don't know if you'd like to add some comments to that, Mr. Delisio?
No, I do. It was an interesting process, but I do want to thank you and the Traffic Study Commission. I think that we gave it, it was probably an hour, hour and 15 minute conversation, flushed out several different ideas. Unfortunately, there were really none that made sense for either party involved, but I think it's appropriate to strike at this time. And again, thank you for entertaining it, and thank you for the attention.
Thank you, Mr. Delisio. Any other...
I'm going to get a complex, you're striking all my business.
Well, give me something else, let's see what happens. I'm teasing. So any other questions or concerns? I move for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So I have another piece of business. Be it ordained by the municipal council of the City of Attleboro as follows, that Section 10-4.12, multi-way stop signs, Chapter 10, motor vehicles and parking of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro be hereby amended by adding the following in proper alphabetical order, Gregory Drive and Essex.
Second.
We discussed that we had a public hearing back in June with regards to this. This is new business brought in by Councilor Higgin. I will ask, we need to make an amendment to this motion. The stop sign needs to be on Essex at Gregory. So if you would make that motion, that would be terrific.
So I make a motion to put the stop sign, amend it.
Amend the motion.
Amend the motion to put the stop sign on Essex.
At Gregory.
At Gregory.
Thank you.
And I second that.
And I can...
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. I can't second that. Three discussions at the Traffic Study Commission meeting last night, we went around and around the table on this one for quite a bit of time. We really take the installation of new stop signs across the city very seriously. And the recommendation, finally, after significant discussion, we have a recommendation from the police chief and the neighborhood in back there has changed repeatedly, that the Traffic Study Commission leans its support to the installation of the stop sign on Essex due to the limited sight distance on Gregory. So if you go down Gregory, there's a limited sight distance where it comes into Essex. So that's where their support was. So I do have that as their support. Councilor Higgin, would you like to add anything?
I know, everyone always thinks for a stop sign, but to some people, a stop sign means a lot. As you saw, Stacy Mayer, she came in tonight to talk about a stop sign. And this is something that, when I had brought it in, I said, as a resident of the area, also the councillor, I do support this, and I was glad Mr. Larry Quaylier came in. And I actually saw him at the Elks meeting last night that we had. And he, I did kind of give him a heads up, because he's like, hey, it was way back in August. And I said, no. And he was actually, he was actually, the last house was on a dead end street. We only have seven houses on that street. So what happened is they opened Juniper, goes down Juniper, opens Gregory up, and it looks like a horseshoe. So we should talk about the limited sight. I believe I sent an email with pictures and gave it to everybody, because coming around the corner, there is, I've almost been hit a few times myself. And as Mr. Quaylier said, this impedes on me, him, everyone that's coming into the neighborhood, because now we have to stop, too. But it's a safety issue, and thank you. Hopefully, everybody will support this. The neighbors do support it. They know it's a pain in the neck now that a stop sign will be there, but for safety issues. So thank you.
My pleasure.
Communicating with me. Communication is key.
I couldn't agree with you more. And there was a lot of communicating going on last evening, so. So I would make a motion, any other questions or concerns about this particular stop sign? I would move for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, actually... Do I have to, I have to take a vote on the amended motion?
First, and then the motion as amended. So this is the vote on the amendment?
On the amendment.
Okay, thank you, so this passed.
That was the aye.
And so then I can read it all, I should read it all again, and...
Or you just, or at that point, if it'd be clearer, you can read the whole thing, or if not, once you've voted the amendment, you can see that now it says, enter in a motion, we're back to the original motion?
Back to, correct. I figured that this was the way that was, so. I will reread it just for our clarity, and then we don't have to do that all again next week. So be it ordained by the municipal council of the City of Attleboro, that this, that Section 10-4.12, the multi-way stop signs, Chapter 10, motor vehicles and parking of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro be hereby amended by adding the following in proper alphabetical order on Essex at Gregory.
Second.
And any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you very much. So I have another piece of business that I currently, I would like to strike it. And it's something that's pretty, something that we've talked about an awful lot. We've had some pretty heated discussions. But it's my opinion, and I've spoken with residents, I've spoken with Bishop Feehan, I think that the Hood Street, excuse me, Harvard Street business, I think it's being managed quite well. It's been two school years that we've been operating under this agreement. If there's, it is my, we had a public hearing back in September of 2015. It was new business that was brought in September 1st of 2015. Things seem to be moving quite nicely over there. I, for a while, I was getting concerns about the residents, but I think that they've worked out a pretty decent system. I don't feel that we need to keep this in my committee and that if new business, if it tends to get out of hand. I've had conversations with Tim Sullivan, the principal, president or principal? President, over there. And he's always very willing to accommodate any of the concerns and to resolve any of the concerns that we have. So I don't think that this is something, this would be a nice little chapter for us to close the door on. But again, if, in the event that they need to bring back business, we can most certainly do that. So I am going to read that now and make a motion to strike that. But I wanted to have some discussion, is there any discussion before I read it? I can do it after? From the docket of September 15th, 2015, I entertain a motion to strike the following item from the docket of September 5th, 2017, Section 10-5.11, prohibited for time-limited parking by adding new Section F pertaining to weekdays parking restrictions on Harvard Street, that no person shall park a vehicle between the hours of 6:00 AM through 8:00 AM and between the hours of 2:00 PM and 3:00 PM on any day except Saturday, Sunday, and legal holidays during the regular Bishop Feehan school year. On the following streets or parts thereof that prohibited for time-limited no parking signs be posted on Harvard Street inbound easterly from North Avenue on the south side of Harvard to the end of the street where it meets the gate at Bishop Feehan property. New business, Mr. Thibodeau, 9/115, public hearing, 9/1515, and supported by the Traffic Study Commission.
Second.
Thank you. And I just want to take a moment to thank Mr. Thibodeau, our former city councillor. I mean, this was my first term on the council I mean, this was my first term on the council when this stuff was going down, and it was he did. And he did a really great job when we would have the public hearings of being able to manage everyone and everyone who got an opportunity to speak. And he worked really diligently with all the parties to try and make something happen where it didn't really appear that anything could, good could happen. So thank you very much, Walter, for that. Any other questions or concerns? Thank you. I move for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The other, as was alluded to very briefly during Mr. Delisio's committee meeting, I have been in contact with, I just wanted to give a Beagle Club Road update. I've been in contact with the ward councilor, with Mr. Cooper. I've spoken with Mr. Delisio. I've spoken with the police chief. I've spoken with some residents in that area this summer. To quote one of them, Nick Calderoni, he said, it's a different place to live down there right now. But the summer was very good, and a lot of their concerns during this time have been remedied. I do have a meeting planned to meet with the neighborhood on Thursday evening. I think it's important that we have a conversation. I talked about a couple of different ideas on how to manage this parking so that it benefits not only the residents, but also everyone. I had a brief conversation with the police chief. I need to have a brief conversation with city council president, Mr. Cook, with regards to a couple of concerns that I have. But it isn't anything, and there are people that are paying attention and are concerned about the sundown and things like that. But it is something that is very much on my plate right now, and hopefully, we'll be able to have some more discussion about it after I speak with the residents. I certainly haven't forgotten our public forum that we had where we had discussions. And Mr. Delisio's business goes hand in hand with this business, with the traffic business in that location. So we're trying to, we're trying to work something out here and move forward. Does anyone, yes, Mr. Blair?
Is this a public meeting you have, or is this private?
No, the residents invited me down to have a conversation with them. And then I can most certainly, we can have, I can invite anyone here to my committee meeting.
I didn't know if you were calling committee meetings.
No, I am not calling a committee meeting for that. They did not request that. They just wanted, it's really just kind of a like, how was your summer? Great. How was yours? Kind of a circumstance, and to get a little bit of feedback from them. I believe I saw Mr. Conti and then President Cook.
My memory of the legislation that we passed had a sunset clause, which said that those signs would come down in September 2017 unless the council voted to sustain them. Is that accurate?
That would be accurate, yeah. If you could, I hold on to your question. Mr. Cook?
The only thing I wanted to, just following up on Council Blair, as long as, I know you invited to meet with the residents. If more than one member of your committee is going to that meeting, then you would have to post it.
That is not the case.
So as long as either Council Reynolds and/or Council Denley, I'm going, you're safe.
Thank you, yes, thank you very much. Mr. Delisio?
And maybe I'm a little foggy on it, but I thought that as of January 1, 2018 is when the signs would come down. I thought that the discussion we had was to have a discussion take place in September.
To be very truthful with you, it was part of, it's something that I have to go back and flesh out with some changes in the staffing right now. That was a little bit challenging. I'm sorry, Mr. Blair?
I go along with Jay. My regulation, regulations anyway, was that we would review, not that anything was going to change.
If I may, if it's my understanding, that no signs are coming down, the parking policy that is currently in place will remain in place until, in the event that changes are made to that. So at this time, nothing's changing. And the signs are accurate, and nothing is changing currently. Did you have your, I'm so sorry.
I'm kind of.
Councilor Hegney?
I'm kind of on the same page as Mr. Conti with the sunset. Because I know even when we had talked about it, I didn't want to extend past a certain timeframe either. I only support for so long too, and I was glad to see the sunset attached. I have faith that you're gonna do what you gotta do with, and keep the council here. And please, just like we said, you know, communication.
Absolutely.
As I said before, I'm getting a lot of people that want to park down. They want to walk their dogs, and they want to go fishing. And as we talk about, that's what I kind of alluded to. I was kind of wondering what the heck is going on, because I just got a call earlier about parking in the area and what was going on. So if you could just keep us kind of updated.
Absolutely. It is something that, if, I don't mean to take the floor from you, please continue. I didn't mean to interrupt you. It is something that is, comes across my phone on a regular basis. It isn't anything that, truth be told, September 1st was a date that was, our first meeting in September was one of the dates. And truthfully, because there hasn't been a constant ringing of my phone with regards to concerns in that location on if I should, you know, I don't want to say both sides of the issue, but that hasn't been happening much this summer. So I wasn't necessarily prepared on our first week back to have that conversation. But the very next day, I put the wheels in motion. I spoke with the police chief, I spoke with the residents, I had communication, again, like I said, with Council Cooper and Council Delisio, because it is something, obviously, where we put that specific language in with the sundown, that we need to get crackalackin'. Ms. Hall?
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you. And just for clarification purposes, so you're gonna research the language to see what kind of language we actually did put in? That's what your next step?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And could you just like email and else?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you. Council Conti?
She said what I was gonna say.
I wouldn't leave any of you hanging, I promise. Council Reynolds?
So I'll just jump on board with what everybody's saying here, but I do get a lot of calls from my ward. And it's still a hot issue in my ward about being able to be there. I think you know that already. So I'm just putting it out there that, you know, there's still a lot of people that are looking for a better solution. Not to change everything, but for some type of a solution that gives them back something as residents of this city. And that's all I have to say.
In my conversations, again, with Mr. Delisio, Mr. Cooper, I think that the temperament and not like the heat of it all may have been slightly reduced. I think that we, as a council, are earning back some of the trust of not only of the residents there and are gaining trust on the other end of it as well for the passive recreation. And I think that it's my hope that when I have a conversation with the residents and I can work some different things out with the police chief and things like that, I think that we might be able to come to a reasonable solution in that location. You know, as Mr. Delisio said, you know, when you go into a negotiation, everybody has to give up something. And not everybody walks away 100% happy, but we need to find something that is acceptable to, that's amicable to everybody. And it's time for that. And I think to take, you know, where, and I don't want to speak for the residents here, fishermen still come, and they don't have a problem with that. They encourage that. They don't want to take that away from anybody. It was the other stuff that came, the riffraff that came, the people who are breaking the law that came, that they had a big problem with. And now those, the people who aren't supposed to be there are gone. We've had tremendous support and enforcement from the Attleboro Police Department in that location, so thank you very much to them. And I think that, again, you know, the high level of heat that was there before might be coming down just a wee little bit. I could be wrong. I could go on Thursday and find out that it's still there. But it's my impression that right now, it's not. So hopefully, we'll be able to come up with a reasonable solution for that. Any other questions or concerns about Beagle Club Road? And I do have one, I still have one small piece of business. Oh, I do have the letter from the police chief that will be, I'll give it to Steve, and then I'll put this in everyone's box with regards to the Eldridge Street. Can I, can I ask you a quick, can we have a conversation about Eldridge Street now that the public hearing closed? Would you prefer that I wait?
I prefer that you wait.
No problem. I can do that. Not a problem. I do have plenty of information and a recommendation from, as I said earlier, from the police chief on that. I will put that in everyone's mailboxes after I submit it to the city clerk. That concludes my business for this evening, and I call for adjournment at 8:13.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8:13.
Do you also go and handle?
Would you, like, would you do the license?
I think it's everybody. Everybody's.
So I call the committee for licenses to order at 8:14.
I'll be your third number again.
Thank you very much. It's you, me, and Mr. Cook this evening. From the docket of September 5, 2017, I entertain a motion to approve the application for a license to ring a bell to sell products from Adam Pelagi, 389 Benefit Street, Attleboro, Mass.
Second.
Thank you very much. I have his application over there somewhere. It seems pretty straightforward. We had a conversation about it previously. I'll move for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the request from Richard Fredette, Disabled American Veterans, Attleboro Memorial, Chapter Number 91, 122 Park Street, Attleboro, Mass., 02703, to hold their yearly Forget Me Not Drive at various locations on Saturday, September 23rd and Saturday, September 30th, 2017.
Second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Conti. As Vice President Denley likes to say, when you're out and about, throw five or 10 bucks at your Forget Me Not. And I think this is, it is, you know, the kids in the city look forward to this, or at least my kids do, anyway. Any questions or concerns? I move for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. That concludes the business for license, the license committee tonight. I call for adjournment at 8:16.
Second.
Very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8:16.
Thank you. I'm gonna go right from here. Call Personnel and Human Services to order at 8. What'd you say?
16. 16.
16. From the docket of September 19, 2017, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $4,058.36 from account 11241000-578300, Citywide Reserve Fund for transfer to account 1541000-511000, Council on Aging Salary, to fund a temporary increase in an employee's hours to provide additional administrative support with several programs being provided to the seniors of Attleboro.
Second.
Thank you. So we all received Madeline's explanation, and I just, for the public, this is to increase one of the employees from a 19-hour work week to a 25-hour work week with a cost of just slightly over $4,000. And the services that this person would provide, the additional administrative support for the seasonal community services, which is the annual leaf raking event in November, the United Way Day of Caring, and if any of us have been involved in that event, it's pretty great. And there's over 200 volunteers that participated last year. Distribution of holiday baskets and dinners, and the request for assistance for snow shoveling, which makes me want to cry because I can't believe we're actually talking about shoveling snow. Hopefully, we don't have many requests for that. Income tax coordination, coordination of the Greater Boston Food Bank program, and another excellent program through Project Bread Healthy Incentives Program, and then to cross-train the staff, including reception, and working with Darlene to learn other pieces of the office function. So any questions, comments, problems? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. From the docket of September 5, 2017, I entertain a motion in accordance with section 1-12 of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro to approve the request of the mayor to accept the donation of 294 Blu-ray DVDs from John Duffy with an estimated value of $4,410, 1,134 Slim Line security cases for the DVDs from, or DVDs from Wellesley Public Library with an estimated value of $5,670, and a children's kitchen set with play utensils and food for the children's room at A.J. Slover with an estimated value of $100 as gifts to the city of Attleboro.
Second.
Thank you. Again, just really thank you to everyone who contributed these excellent and well-needed items and to the city. Any other questions, comments, problems? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. And lastly, on the docket is, I entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Nicholas Wiley, 60 Westwood Park Circle, Attleboro, Mass., 02703, to fill an unexpired term of conservation agent and environmental planner term to expire February 2019.
Second.
Thank you. Due to the scheduling, we were gonna have Nick come today. I did ask him to reschedule till the 28th, so he will be here for the committee meetings on the 28th to introduce to the community. But I think most of us either know him personally or know him through his current previous, what'd I say, 28?
He did.
Oh, 26. So he will join us then to be introduced to the community in this full-time capacity. He had been previously the, doing the bits and pieces of the job on a part-time basis. Any questions, comments, problems? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. That concludes the business for Personnel and Human Service, and we call for an adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8:20.
You guys, okay?
I canceled.
Kate, are you on, did I get that call?
I called for the public hearing last week.
Okay.
Yep. When it came out.
How about the other one on Dennis Street?
Yeah, we passed over.
You wanted to get a public hearing last week? We had a public hearing last week.
We had a public hearing, and brought it out of committee last week.
I think you brought it out.
I brought it out last week.
Did you bring it out last week?
Yep. I brought it, I brought them both out last week.
Sometimes I keep.
One on Dennis Street and one in.
I needed that seat.
Right. Just make sure we have it.
You keep it on, because I have to stop them out.
I think call a committee of public safety emergency management to auto.
8:21.
8:20. Snap it.
I thought I'd help an older person.
You did, you did.
No.
I'm glad you said older.
I was watching her words.
What time was that again?
8:21. The hearing, huh?
Okay.
She's pushing it.
I have one motion this evening from the docket of September 19, 2017. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor in accordance with chapter 1, section 12 of the revised ordinance of the city of Attleboro to allow the police department to expend approximately $12,000 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, EOPS-S, Highway Safety Division, through the FY 2018 Traffic Enforcement Grant as specified within the perimeters of the grant, and also approve any further grant amendments. Have a second?
Second.
I think we've seen part of this to work today, if you look throughout the city. Basically, we had some traffic enforcement out there, runs along the same lines. They were doing crosswalks and, you know, where the kids are back in school. So it's great extra. Protection for, especially our children. Okay. Any questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Hegney?
Thank you, Mr. Blair, for making that comment too about the safety and what's going on now with stings, or I shouldn't say stings, but safety issues. As I know a lot of people will complain about the police department giving tickets, but if you're getting a ticket, there's a reason why. There's an infraction. And that's the thing, even, and I'm saying this too, because even in my other world, I teach driver's ed in the classroom. There's a huge issue right now, and this is a huge grant to get out there, to be able to have the people that aren't stopping for crosswalks. School is back in session. I just had a call today, I was gonna talk about it later with you too, is people not stopping at the crosswalks and other issues. People really have to wake up and pay attention to what's going on. So thank you.
There's definitely a safety situation out there with the children going back to school. But all of us, I would assume, has noticed the ignorance of some drivers out there when somebody's standing on the curb, standing on the curb waiting to cross the street. You've got to remind people every so often, and I think this is a good way of doing it. Yes, Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Blair. So interestingly, I was an unlikely participant in a sting. And I was, we talked about this at Traffic Study last night, and there was discussion about, you know, when you see the speed signs on West Street and where they roll all over the place, you love them. Mr. Cooper lives off West Street. So that's all part of the grant. Those are all grant-funded for those around the city. And I just wanted to take just a second to thank the police chief because he did do a reassignment of crossing guards after being part of the consortium. And it has been, with the exception of one location, but we're working on that right now, it has been tremendously successful. The first day of school, it was like, when I drove down County Street and saw all of the crossing guards on County Street, I nearly like jumped for joy. In addition to that, they've put three crossing guards up at Rathburn World at the high school, which is so unbelievably important, especially when the time changes and the kids are trying to cross the street and you can't see anything, and parents are all over the place. So they've had to handle, like, County Street traffic has been a little more congested because we're actually stopping vehicles to cross. But I've probably sent a text to the chief probably six times, like, oh my gosh, thank you so much, because I couldn't be more enthusiastic about that. I mean, it doesn't have, that portion of it doesn't have much to do with the grant that we're talking about right now. But in conjunction with the grant-funded speed limit signs and the crosswalk operations and things like that, it just appeared to me that the safety of our community was really coming together at the very beginning and continues now, like, at the beginning of the school year. It was like a blitz, and I couldn't have been happier. So thank you.
I talked to the chief shot time ago about it, and he said that they were reassigning, taking some away in redistrict, and he's had some comments, you know, where are my crossing guards, you know? But he's pulled them where there was one child crossing the street and put them where there was 20 children crossing. He's done a lot of work on that. So if there's any, any questions about that, please either get in touch with Heather or myself, and I'm sure we'll follow up on that. myself and I'm sure we'll follow up on that, because the children's safety is prominent.
Yeah, if I may, just redirect. There was, there is one circumstance and I'm working in conjunction with the police chief.
And I'm sure he's being very cooperative.
Absolutely. It's very.
Mr. Cooper?
So since it was brought up, I have to say that, and I know it's got nothing to do with this, but I'm, I'm sorry. Apologize in advance.
Please.
But I have to tell you that the flashing signs on West Street, and I know, you know, I see some of us as I ride my bike around the city in the morning and I've been almost killed on, on West Street on my bike. And in fact, the other morning I was out and my neighbor across the street, you know, we meet and we bring our trash barrels out and the guy, and the lady next to him said, "I go 28 miles an hour down West Street because I know one of these days I'm gonna come around the corner and they're gonna be in the, in the cemetery waiting." So the neighborhood's waiting for somebody to get pulled over.
What?
Because they're still flying past that 30 mile an hour flashing electronic sign on West Street that couldn't be any clearer that says, "Slow down."
Yeah.
So it's, it's, people are noticing and I think it's, it's had a great effect on, on.
People noticing, a few people getting stopped and maybe paying that ticket. It's, it is a reminder and nothing reminds anybody any better than reaching in their pocket and paying them. Oh, fine. Mr. Conti?
I have found that it's the number two comment while campaigning, traffic enforcement. So to your point, Council Hagney, is that I'm, I, I tell people all the same thing, they go on the website, go into the police department, fill out the form, request for service, and it gets logged. I mean, so at least you can, at least you can substantiate your desire to get some traffic enforcement in your area, whether it's a ticket or speeding or the like. I, I have to comment on the, the crossing guard. It's probably the best memo I've received this year, the three-page memo from the police chief explaining what happened as a result of our inquiry to ask the police department to look in to the crossing guards. I know Council Hall served on the committee and Council Harika served on the committee. I was asked to, but I felt that my time commitment was too high with the Parks and Open Space Committee and the other commitments I had, and I have no expertise in that area. I'm very pleased with the results. I too, coming down County Street, very happy to see crossing guards where I think they're needed and the same thing on Thatcher Street. I believe that this is an improvement in the city of Attleboro. Now, specific to this grant, I know, I've had conversations with the chief that, you know, that people would like to see more enforcement. He's doing a very good job keeping up with the requests, but the only other answer is more policemen. And that's expensive.
You're, you're absolutely right, Mr. Conti. You need people out on the street. I think he does a heck of a job with the staff he's got and what he works with. I'm gonna throw a kudo to Mr. Keel, Lieutenant Keel. He's gonna have some surgery done, work out his time and retire. I hope that the person that takes over on that grant writing does as great a job as God has done for us. I, I know I've mentioned in the past, he's brought in hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in state and federal grants. He did a great job of it, so, you know, good luck to, to Lieutenant Keel, you know. Maybe I'm being a little preemptive on this, but I don't think we're gonna see him around too much longer. He's got some surgery coming up and he's gonna work out his sick time and, and retire, well-deserved retirement.
Yes, Mr. Blair. It's a great point and, you know, we wish him all the best, but the other thing about these grants is you have to be able to find them. You have to know where to look to find the grants.
Yes.
So there's a certain skill in that, but a lot of it doesn't happen without the partnership built between the Attleboro Police Department and the Executive Office of Protection, Public Safety and Security.
Scott and, Scott and the chief work on that constantly.
It's an amazing thing to be able to, to not just write the grants, but know where to look for them and as soon as they're available, be able to pull upon some of those partnerships in order to make it happen. So I think it's, it's, to miss a conscious point, I think all of us sitting around here would like to see more offices, but in the meantime, let's keep the grant dollars, because one thing that they excel at is the non-matching grant funds.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, that's critical. So thank you.
I, I'd think when the last one we got across this council that the police department had to match money. There was a couple we matched in-kind services and whatnot, but it hasn't been a matching grant.
In a long time.
Long time. Oh, okay. Getting back, I, you lost me a little bit here. I call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Pose? Hearing none? Motion passes. That's all the business I have for this evening. Call for an adjournment at 8:31.
And Public Works would like to reconvene its meeting, please. I just have one motion. Last week we had a public hearing on a National Grid pole on Dennis Street and I need to vote that out of committee this week, so next week we can vote it out to the full council. So from the docket of September 5th, 2017, I entertain a motion to approve the petition from National Grid to install a 35-foot Class III pole, struck guy and an anchor with an eight-foot lead across from pole 7293 Dennis Street. Pole will be labeled Pole 7293-84.
Second.
Thank you. So there was no opposition at the public hearing and there was a gentleman here to speak last week. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion passes. Thank you. We are adjourned at 8:36. Thanks. I think that's it for the evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Again, remember, please give your minutes or should you give up your motions for next week?